I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order, Charter Township, zoning Board of Appeals Meeting, Monday, February 13th. I'd like to have everyone rise and pay respects to our club.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Secretary noting the role?
Bailey?
Yes.
Butler?
Here.
Manickley?
Yes.
Payne?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
There is a forum.
Thank you. Item four on the agenda, approval of the agenda.
One note in the case B under item five, it's printed out as 20, but in the print season it's two. If you want to correct that, just leave it as is.
Where is that?
On tonight's agenda?
On tonight's agenda, case B, item five. It says 20, but in print season it's two. So that amendment, make a motion to approve the agenda?
Do we get a second?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. All approved, or all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Then we approve tonight's agenda. Item five, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, December 12th, 2022.
I'd like to approve the regular meeting minutes from December 12th, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. Item six on tonight's agenda, public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Anyone from the public? See none? We'll close that at 7:02. New business, tonight we have the election of officers. So, the first officer that we're going to need a nomination for is the chairperson.
What are you doing here?
I've already done my two tours of duty.
I make a nomination, I make a nomination for really chairman?
Second.
Wow, that was quick.
So Butler nominates Mayor Bailey. And supported by Kay. Bailey, did you want to accept the nomination?
I will accept that.
Alright. Bailey accepts the nomination. Is there any other nominations? Now do I, do I need to do a roll call or can I?
Nope, you can just read that last statement.
Alright, board member Bailey will serve as chairperson for the 2023 year by unanimous consent.
So now Corey will take over.
So I'm gonna hand the cable over to you, right?
Nice.
You wanna switch seats? I'll just do this right.
Thanks. Okay, so the second order of business would be the vice chairperson?
I nominate Tyler Walters as the vice chairman?
Yeah. Oh, that was quick. I'll accept the nomination.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations? With that, I will accept that as a unanimous vote.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
The next would be the secretary position?
I nominate Jim Butler as the secretary.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations?
I accept. Okay.
Okay, well, we will accept that nomination and take that as a unanimous vote as well. Okay, so we will move forward to new business, item B. Case number 22ZBA004, Petrona, 590 Maloney Avenue, P0428303006. Petitioner Daniel Petrona. The applicant is proposing to build an additional above the garage and add two-story addition in the rear. Six variances are being requested. Number one, the reduced side yard setback for 4.3 feet rather than the 10 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district. Number two, the reduced building-to-building setback of 1.3 feet rather than 10 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district. Number three, reduced front yard setback of 2.5 feet rather than 25 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district. Number four, reduced building-to-building setback of 2.8 feet rather than the 10 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district. Five, reduced yard setback of 0 feet rather than 2 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district.
That's 20 feet.
That's 20.
Oh, that's right, we did correct that. 20, 20 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district. Six, reduced natural features of setback of 16 feet rather than the 25 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district. And just so that everybody is aware of how this procedure will take place, we will start with the applicant's statement. Once that is complete, we will open up the public hearing. We will take comments and questions from the public. Once that is done, we will close the public hearing. We will then have building administrators' comments. The board members can ask questions and make comments to the applicant. We will then go through the finding of fact, which is in Article 17, Section 17.8, Variances Under Standards. We'll then entertain a motion, the board members will discuss, comment, and finally make a vote. So, do we have the applicant prepared this evening? Please come up, state your name.
Daniel Petrona.
Okay.
And the reason I'm doing this is we need the space, they put the new bridge in and we had to relinquish some sheds, and we also are on a crawl space and we do not have a basement, so we are gonna use the garage as a second story, put on second story for storage and a technically mainly storage and closets, et cetera, et cetera. And then, and here you had the second story in the back, we want to enclose a porch, sunroom type thing.
Any other information that we will need regarding this before we open it up for the public?
No, that is what we need. It's a 1947's cottage that was built on, and where the road becomes a pie shape, and so some of the, I don't know how to say it, other than you're literally right on the property line of the existing structures. And what we want to do is we just want to put a second story over the garage structure for storage. And then on the other one, the decks were built out towards the water, and that's where that setback comes in, that we're asking for a variance, that's all. So there's no, we're not really doing anything major other than what has been existing there for the many, many years.
Okay.
The garage literally is on, the existing two-car garage, two and a half really, is literally on the property line. It's been there since 1957. So, it's, this is the home that's adjacent to the new bridge that they just put on Maloney. So, in doing so, we had the, the road commission took our sheds in building the bridge. So, that's where we're at.
They took your sheds?
Well, yeah, yeah, no, literally, they, let me rephrase it. They bought our sheds, but we can't put them back.
Okay.
Alright. So, they did, in defense of that, they did pay us for the sheds, but we cannot put them back on because they took the easement, that's part of the bridge easement now.
Okay.
I don't know if any of yous have been out there to see it, so, okay, Jim, you, you know exactly what's there then. And by the way, they did, they did, the bridge came out really nice for what it is, it really is, they made it larger and very usable now. So that's where we're at, Corey.
Okay.
So that's why we're in here for the multiple variances, but there are only, some of the footage is there, some of it isn't there.
Okay.
And our neighbors are very happy with the situation completely, I've talked to all of them, so.
Okay. Well, then, I guess the next step is we will open up the public hearing portion at 7:12 to see if there are any comments from the public that wish to speak on this matter. If you would like, please come to the podium, give your name and address. Not all at once. Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:13, and we will begin building administrator comments.
We have no building administrator comments, got that letter from Carl Wardman that was in the packet.
Okay.
And that letter was dated January 24th, 2022, I think it's 2023, it's 23 now.
Yeah.
January 24th.
Yeah, and the header, second page is 23.
They did the same thing down there with the two feet as well.
Okay, so we will move on from the building administrator comment, we do have the paperwork from Carl Wardman that we all have read through. I guess I would go through the board member questions, comments, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Are you ready? Sure. So essentially, this is similar to what you did in 2018 when you came in front of us, right? You're in front of for a variance in 2018?
I went for a variance in 2018 and it was approved, 100%.
Now, there, on the drawing done by Houston Kennedy, there's a shed that shows in the front area, that's no longer there, right?
What is that?
That shed?
The shed's gone.
Shed's not there, so we wouldn't need, what I can tell, one of these variances we don't need. Or say it's the fourth one?
Building setback?
Yeah, so I don't think the fourth one we need.
So we're gonna take that out?
So number four we can remove?
Yeah, um, is that, is, I have not gone out there recently. The, it shows on the survey done by Houston Kennedy, can we refer season room addition? Is that existing?
I'm sorry?
Is that existing? The addition towards the lake?
Yes.
So it was enclosed?
It was enclosed by renewal of Anderson, uh, what do you call it? Yeah, Anderson, renewal, yeah, the window place, renewal by Anderson.
Okay, so that, when was that done?
That was done about a year and a half ago or two years.
Was the building current pulled?
I thought that Anderson was gonna pull the building permit. It's troublesome. Because when we did the wall side windows, they all pulled all the permits, and when we did some other things, like the heating, they pulled the permit, so we presumed they were gonna pull the permit, because the deck was there and the roof was there and they came in with the windows. And I notice which, Kennedy calls it a four-season window. It technically is a four-season, but you're in the cold weather, it's just, you know, it is what it is.
Is it heated then?
And just for, we're talking about this, alright. It says can't move.
Yes, that's the deck of it.
Does it have a foundation?
Just the foundation that was, the deck that was there.
It doesn't have a wall?
It's really a crawl space.
Is there a heat electrical out in there?
Do we have much, oh yes.
What about heat?
Uh, yes.
Get your mic back on the mic, easier, our recording's.
Andy's statewide did the, the heat. It's one of those Mitsubishi.
Oh.
Yeah, 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 the wall, they pulled permits for that.
Okay.
Yes, they did.
Ventless, I believe?
What's that?
Ventless? It's, it doesn't require a vent necessarily for it?
Doesn't require any what?
A vent to vent it out.
Oh, no, 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 it's, well, we have the out, there's the unit in the front, and then the, the fan and stuff are outside, they're building on the, on the outside. That I know we pulled the permit for too, Andy statewide.
And that is attached to the home, right? It's attached, physically attached?
The whole unit?
No, the addition that was put on.
Yes.
That's attached, physically attached?
Well, we, the outside wall, the exist, both houses are now on the inside of the sunroom.
So they basically just took the deck and closed it with windows.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch, you did not pull a permit for that all-season room, is that correct? Pardon? You did not pull a permit for the all-season? No, I did not. But you, you had the assumption that? Renewal by Anderson. Renewal by Anderson did?
You're putting a storage room above the garage?
Yes, that's.
And you have another room that you want, is that the entire large room that's on the, say the north side, I guess it would be?
Yes, it is.
So that's gonna be all one room just connected with the hallway? And is any of it gonna jump over top of the white deck there, I guess?
No, no, no.
So the whole part stays? Is it gonna connect to that dormer that's already up there?
It's just the old dorm, it's gonna be connected to the dormer, exactly.
Like a doorway floor or something, a hallway?
It's, it's the end of the stairs.
Oh, okay.
It's the end of the stairs, it's like a little landing that's about twice the size of that table.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions or?
I don't know.
Any other questions? Okay, so we will go through the findings of fact, which is found in Article 17, Section 17.8, Variances, Section C, Under Standards. So, we will go through them one by one and discuss what each of the board feels. Number one, strict compliance with restrictions governing area's setback, frontage, height, bulk, density, or other non-use matters will reasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render the ordinance conformity unnecessarily burdensome. What are your thoughts? Does this apply, not apply?
To some degree it do, but at the same time, I'm on the other side with it too, because you said strict compliance.
I mean, obviously the site is an oddly shaped parcel, you apply all setbacks. I mean, you look at the picture that was in the car, it was a small triangle. So from that, if you strictly comply, you take all the setbacks, it couldn't, I think it would not in this case.
It would be a burden.
It would be a burden.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, number two, the variance will do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to the other property owners?
I would agree with that one. I mean, I haven't heard from the other homeowners, but, um...
I am one of the other homeowners. I live right next door to the Petronas. And it doesn't bother us.
Because you're the, basically the only neighbor really, right next door. You know, I mean, there's other people on the street, but it's real tight there. So...
We're not, we're not going to any place near the neighbors whatsoever.
I mean, not making, you're not making the non-conformity more the non-conforming, right?
Right.
It is non-conforming right now, and it was legally non-conforming, we're not making the level of non-conformity more non-conforming.
That's the problem with existing, right?
Right. Okay. A lesser variance than requested will not give substantial relief to the applicant and will not be more consistent with justice to other property owners.
Well, with a lesser variance, I don't think there is one, with the existing structure, especially the front yards. The rear yard, I mean, it is a sunroom. Should have pulled a permit, should have actually been in front of us, zoning board appeals, to be honest with you.
What's that?
Well, I'm just making a statement, for that sunroom enclosure, it's an, you're encroaching in the rear yard setback, and you're encroaching in the natural feature setback. A permit, and you should have been in front of us for a variance. You know, this is after the fact, this is not, doesn't make people happy. You know, asking for forgiveness after you do it, I don't have a hard time with that.
Is that something that we could go back and require before, or as?
We put conditions on it. We put a condition on it, he's here right now, he's asking for a variance, so, for that sun.
And normally after the approval, it's 365 days, right? And, well, beyond that. So I agree with Butler, right? The resulting non-conformity, I don't, I don't even, is it consistent with the neighbors? I think it is, because we had a lot of Maloney.
Yeah, over the years.
Residents have, will approach us for it, right? So a lesser variance, I don't know, I think it applies.
Okay. Number four?
Okay, I'm sorry, what was that? Did you come to conclusion?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances peculiar to the property and not generally applicable in the area or to other properties in the same zoning district.
Well, it is unique, it is existing, it is applicable to mostly everything along there, for the most part. I mean, obviously, at some point in time, it did need a requirement. Obviously, the ordinance has changed related to setbacks, so it makes it the need for them to have come forward with variances for these particular things. So I think it applies.
Okay.
I agree, I'm on first.
Number five, the problem and resulting need for the variance has not been self-created by the applicant and/or the applicant's predecessors.
Well, again, the front setback, those issues, that's an existing condition, again, one time it sure met some ordinance, met some setback requirement. The rear yard setback, I'm not necessarily sure it applies there. I mean, that's, that's on the applicant, they knew what they were doing.
For the?
For the sunroom, rear yard setback.
And the deck.
Yeah, that, you know, that was, that was self-created by the applicant.
Any other?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, you have, you know, a part of this that it has been self-created as well as hasn't been self-created, so, I agree with Butler on this.
With the, no permit? Any more on the finding of fact and more questions or?
Well, again, if we're inclined to do something here, as a condition, I would think we'd want to make sure that goes with the permit.
Oh, absolutely.
If they had reviewed, that would be a conditional approval.
So one of the conditions we can?
Impose.
We took out number four.
Yep.
Right. So, move those up, so now we have number six, we can make the condition to pull that
Building permit for the?
Building permit.
For the all-season room.
Porch.
And then if he does the permit for that room, will he have to come back before us? Because it's already done.
Well, we'd be correct in a variance a lot, because, you know, it's a zero setback as it's into the weather features.
I guess with that, we'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I, in the case of ZBA 22, ZBA 0459 Maloney Avenue, P0428303006, I make a motion to approve the five variances plus the one condition. Variance number one, reduction of side yard setback to 4.3 feet rather than 10 feet as required in R1 single-family residential district. Number two, reduce the building to setback to 1.3 feet rather than 10 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district. Reduce the front yard setback to 2.5 feet rather than the 25 feet as required in the R1 single-family residential district. Number four, reduce the rear yard zero setback rather than 20 feet as required in the R1 single-family district, and the condition being that a building permit is pulled for the currently constructed all-seasons room.
Second.
So we have a motion?
Oh, I got one, sorry, I got one more. I apologize, I mean, I meant my motion.
Okay.
Above the condition, the number five, which would be the reduce, reduction of the natural feature setback of 16 feet rather than 25 feet as required in the R1A single-family district. I'm gonna put the condition after, right?
Okay.
So there are six items on there.
I second the...
Second? So we have a motion and a second, we'd like a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Manickley?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
Motion passed.
You have your conditional variance.
Thank you, my friend. And you have to go and get the permits accordingly. Yes?
Yes, it's permits.
Thank you.
Yeah, you'll check with the building department.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Okay, for the next item under new business, C, case 22-ZBA-005. Case 22-ZDA-005, Oxford Township Parks and Recreation, 2795 Seymour Lake Road, Parcel 0430200058. Petitioner is Phil Castoni. I didn't pronounce that right, did I?
Yeah, perfect.
Oh, did I? Okay. Director of Parks and Rec. The applicant has proposed a lot split that will require several variances. Six variances are requested. Number one, minimum permitted lot size for parcel A from 5 acres to 0.97 acres in the recreational district. Number two, minimum permitted lot width for parcel A from 330 feet to 291.7 feet in the recreation district. Number three, permitted side yard setback for parcel B from 50 feet to 26.7 feet in the recreation district. Number four, permitted side yard setback for parcel B from 50 feet to 16.6 feet in the recreation district. Number five, permitted side yard setback in parcel A from 50 feet to 3.6 feet in the recreation district. And number six, permitted side yard setback in parcel A from 50 feet to 25.1 feet in the recreation district. And just like we did before, uh, the way this will flow is we'll ask the applicant to make a statement. Once that is complete, we'll open up for public hearing. Then we will open up for comments and questions from the public. Once that is complete, we will close the public hearing. Building administrator comments, if they're available. Number six, board member questions and comments. Number seven, we will then go through the finding of facts in Article 17, Section 17.8, Variances, Section C, Standards. We will then entertain a motion. The board members will discuss and comment, and finally vote on that. Is the applicant prepared to present?
Good evening, board members. Phil Castoni, Director, Oxford Township Parks and Recreation. I inform you, this property in question is actually, the address is 510 South Coates. It's southeast corners Seymour Lake Township Park. Uh, this is a former farmhouse with adjacent property that was purchased and acquired by the park system back in October 2010. Uh, the reason for the purchase, um, was for the land and the farmhouse just happened to be part of the parcel. Um, Parks and Recreation has been renting that house since 2011. Since then, the parcel that was purchased has been lumped in with the Seymour Lake Township Park, so it is all one parcel. Back in 2016, Parks and Recreation built, um, and moved their maintenance operations from the front of the park where our administrative offices are now to the back of the park on that parcel that was formerly owned by the Patch family. Uh, we have a current tenant in the property who has expressed interest in purchasing it. Since I've come on board since July, I came from a park system at Oakland County where we have multiple residential properties and being in the rental property management business is not something I prefer to be in, um, with having a willing tenant. Timing just seemed right to try and, and split the parcel and sell it. It would not change the use of the parcel. Uh, it's currently being rented and used as residential property next to our maintenance facility, and that would not change. The property is currently not on the tax roll because it is part of the park system parcel. Uh, this split would allow it to go back on the tax roll and collect the taxes for the township as well.
Okay. Is that everything you have for tonight, or to prepare?
That's it for my introduction.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We will now open up for the public hearing at 7:35. We will entertain comments and questions from the public. Um, the way this will work is if anyone would like to come up to the podium, state your name, your address. Uh, you'll be given three minutes, uh, to make any statements. So we will open that up, uh, at this time.
Hello. My name is Jim Fresh. I live on 306 Coriel. So if you're looking at the maintenance building and you're staring out the garage, you'll see my house. Um, that's where I live and I, I'm, I guess I'm here to support the Parks and Rec because they've done, done a good job with what's out there now and I expect them to keep doing it. And, uh, I think it makes a whole lot of sense to get that house back on the tax roll and not in the Parks and Rec. Because really, why are they taking care of the house? That's all. I'm just here to view my support for the Parks and Rec.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, uh, anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Steve Pike, uh, 234 Nicholas Court. I also border up to the park. Um, I've got a question. Phil, you said that the, the sale would still be a rental? Did I hear that wrong?
No, it's currently rented if the current tenant wants to purchase it, so...
Okay, so...
They would be a homeowner.
Homeowner.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, that, that is my only question and also I'm here, um, to support the park and what they're offering or asking to do.
Well, thank you.
Any other, uh, community members wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the...
Mr. Mr.
Oops, sorry. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is James Schlecker. I live across from that building that you're talking about. I live at 475 South Coates Road. Um, I think my only concern with going down that path would be for whoever buys the property as far as the property value itself. It's resale value in case they ever wanted to leave that spot. I have no problem with the tenants that live across the road. They've been very kind to us. But I do worry about their potential, uh, needs for the house. If they ever have to do any sort of upgrades with these already changes for setbacks to, to get the property sold, um, that this may limit them from doing anything else with the property. Um, it's obvious that the current tenants are okay with the location, but there are things about doing the setback change and selling the property that could be concerned. My property that's across the street, we don't mind so much, being we do quite a bit of hay farming and, uh, we have an LLC there and farm up and down Coates Road and in North Oxford. Um, so noise and being on 10 acre parcels, it's pretty common to understand this. But being that this is going to go to such a small parcel and it is next to the recreation facilities where the maintenance building is, in the past, it has been very loud there and sometimes it can be loud throughout the night if they're doing late work, which is, makes sense for, for the work that's being done. Um, obviously, the current tenants don't have an issue and, uh, I think the only thing that would be smart is to think about the potential future owners of that house. Uh, you know, people do, uh, these folks are younger and I believe they have kids and it's not out of the question that you decide, "Well, I don't want to be next to the park with all this loud noise." Um, they're doing logging in the back, like, uh, sawmill work and, um, there's the big brush piles in the back for mulch and such, and, uh, you know, it's busy. And you worry about kid safety and such and, um, and so the ability of who's going to buy the house in the future, uh, might be something of question. And if they ever want to do anything to that old house, it is an old house and those setbacks are still going to be there. I know for us, even under the Right to Farm Act, if I want to put extra buildings on my current property, it's still tough to do, even with that backing. So for these folks to do any extra work there that they want to do, it's rather tough. So I would consider that in your decision about whether to get it gone. And I do understand it's nice to get off the tax roll, or put it back in, rather, and to bring that money back. I get that. But I, I would consider that, especially considering the lot sizes around it and the work that is around that area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There's a letter in the packet that the secretary, the newly, um, anointed secretary needs to read into the record.
It isn't the clearest of copies, I guarantee you. Do your best.
All right, this is a letter, handwritten letter, and it's in response to petition 22ZDA-005. Whenever I hear anything about the park and recs department, I get the nasty taste in my mouth. It all started with the purchase of the property north of the garage and house. At that time, we, friend, the neighbors on Coates Road were concerned about the park using Coates Road as an exit for the park or entrance. We were concerned about the traffic, noise, and dust. We were assured that the park would never, ever exit onto Coates Road as long as the park owned the property. Besides...
Yeah, it does make sense.
Okay, the owner of the property all the way to Drain Road, they could exit there if they had to. In fact, we have an, we have an agreement that states so. About two years, two years later, the park made another agreement that made the first agreement null and void. After that, they exit onto Coates Road whenever they want to. Soon after that, they wanted a house or, for their meetings and the garage...
For maintenance?
For maintenance. And it had the property. The garage was never closed for maintenance and the house IDK. After that, a new maintenance garage was built and now then we have all kinds of traffic, noise, and dust at all hours of the day and night. Now they want, they now, they now are renting the house out and took the property off the tax rolls. So they are in the real estate business or they are just landlords. In conclusion, I think this zone, I think this zoning regulation is just another stepping stone for bigger plans. The park is running amok and needs to be stopped now. I concern Coates resident, neighbor, Ardell O. Fenstad.
Okay. Seeing no one else, we will close the public hearing at 7:44. I do not see anybody from the building administrators.
And we do have a link from Carla Workman in our packet.
Correct.
And that letter for the record is dated...
January 24th.
January 24th?
Yeah, January 24th. 2023. Well, with somebody going.
So we will move on to board member questions and comments before going into the finding of fact. Sure.
Um, was there any consideration given to seeking rezoning of the property?
On the whole parcel?
Just the parcel you're going to sell.
My understanding was we had to do this first. Is what I was told.
Because, you know, looking at a similar type zoning within the district, you know, you're, you're surrounded by SF and R3, I believe. Yes. I mean, the closest one you're going to get to is the R, R1, which is 1 acre, 150 feet. It's close to the setbacks that they're asking for. You're going to get a few variances there, but... And the biggest, the biggest variance is obviously because of the recreational zone. I mean, if it goes and gets rezoned, those variances get lesser and lesser.
My understanding is we had to do the split first because it's all one parcel right now.
Yeah.
So it's kind of, we have to do one before the other.
And then vice versa, you have the other issue related to the setbacks of maintenance fire, don't you, now?
Right.
Against the single family? Am I correct?
The setbacks are for the buildings as they are between both properties as it is already, so...
Okay.
It may change the distance that's required.
Yeah.
Depending on what the zoning is, but...
But yeah, I see your point that this piece would have to be split off before it could be rezoned, is my understanding. Okay. The only question I had was the split shows, um, the property line is going about three feet into where you guys have a fence right now? Is there a plan to move that?
Yes, the fence would then be moved.
Okay.
Yep. We were trying to, since we own it all right now, we were trying to figure out that median ground that gave the best distance between all the buildings we could.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comment from board members?
And now I'm going to go back for the zoning. I'm just thinking. I'm just trying to think, I was, I was like, going to work. Anyways, that's a planning condition, not, not a ZDA issue. I have nothing further.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay. Then we will move to go through the findings of fact. Article 17, Section 17.8, Variances, Section C, Standards. Number one, strict compliance with restrictions governing area, setback, frontage, height, bulk, density, and/or other use matters will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render ordinance conformity unnecessarily burdensome.
Well, it was originally intended to be a residence and I think by allowing this, but we, we allow it to be used for what it's intended.
I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Okay, number two. The variance will do substantial justice to the applicant as well as to the other property owners?
Yeah, it will. I would agree.
Okay. Number three. A lesser variance than requested will not give substantial relief to the applicant and will not be more consistent with justice to other property owners.
It's about the best you can do, really, with buildings and everything that's configured. I don't know if there is a lesser variance that's there. The lesser you make on the, the, you create more issues.
Yeah. Okay. Number four. The need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances peculiar, peculiar to the property and not generally applicable in the area or to the other properties in the same zoning district.
It's the only recreational.
Yeah. With a single-family house on it.
Right.
So it is unique in that circumstance.
All right, number five. The problem and the resulting need for the variance has not been self-created by the applicant and/or the applicant's predecessor?
I think it was, wasn't it? When they purchased the property?
Well, they purchased the whole property.
Right, yeah.
So are we good with number five or concerns?
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, we will move to number eight and I will entertain a motion.
All right. In the matter of ZDA 22ZDA-005, Oxford Park and Rec Department, I make a motion to approve the variances, the five variances, the six variances.
Say, say it's six.
Six variances. Uh, number one, permitted lot size for parcel A of 5 acres to be reduced to 0.97 acres in a recreational district. Two, minimum permitted lot width for parcel A from 330 feet to 221.97 feet in a recreational district. Three, permitted side yard setback for parcel B from 50 feet to 26.7... Three, permitted side yard setback for parcel B from fifty feet to twenty-six-point-seven feet in a recreational district. Four, permitted side yard setback for parcel B from fifty feet to sixteen-point-six feet in a recreational district. Number five, permitted side yard setback in parcel A from fifty feet to thirty, three-point-six feet in a recreational district. And number six, permitted side yard setback for parcel A from fifty feet to twenty-six, to twenty-five-point-one feet in a recreational district. Also like to add the condition that the parcel be rezoned to a suitable residential zoning district.
Second.
Get it, get a rezoned.
Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, uh, any board member discussion?
On your item five, did you say thirty-six feet, or three-point-six feet?
Three-point-six.
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 For clarity on your motion, are you conditioning number six on number seven? Because you don't know that number seven will happen. I just want to make sure that, that it's clear in the.
Am I sure we condition all six on number seven happening?
Yes.
Yes.
All six.
All six.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussions? Uh, with that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Payne?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Magley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so we move on to number eight, uh, board member comments.
Congratulations to our new chairman, new vice chairman. I meant to tell you that before the meeting. Did I tell you that? I, you know, forgot something. Sorry, Corey.
Yeah. Thanks.
Why don't you maybe do it?
Okay. With no other comments, we will adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-two.
Motion to adjourn?